We'll call to order this the Monday, August 12th, 2024 meeting of the Ellisville Town Council. Chief, you want to do the prayer? Prayer?
I have the honor to become the foreman to see you again, just thank you so much, it was a privilege to work with this little town as a servant, citizen, and to be with us tonight in this industry, made to affect them all, request his aid in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call whenever you're ready.
Dan Swaffer?
Here.
Trevor Sager?
Here.
William Ellis?
Here.
Scott Oldham?
Here.
Pamela Samples?
Here.
Yeah. Approval of the minutes for the regular meeting July 22nd, 2024.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Action to pay accounts payable vouchers and payroll.
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? Now we move to award bid contract for the Ellisville Heritage Center.
That's me. At the July 22nd meeting of the town council, two bids to construct the Ellisville Heritage Center at Stewart Park were opened. The Ellisville Heritage Center is made possible from a ready grant, which is a state grant. We reviewed the bids and Value Bill Incorporated had the lowest bid of $398,700. We are requesting the bid be awarded to Value Built Incorporated.
Questions from council? Ms. Brown, have you reviewed this and you're good with everything?
Pardon me, I'm sorry.
Have you reviewed this and you're good with everything?
Yes.
Okay. Questions or comments from the public on this issue? Back to council fraction.
I move approval of Resolution 26-2024.
Second.
Oh, wait a minute.
This is award.
This is award to contract bid.
Yep.
We'll get to the other one in a minute.
I move we award the contract, the Ellisville Heritage Center.
Okay, second.
To Value Bill Incorporated.
To Value Built Incorporated.
Motion is second, roll call please.
Dan Swaffer?
Yes.
Trevor Sager?
Yes.
William Ellis?
Yes.
Scott Oldham?
Yes.
Pamela Samples?
Yes. Thank you.
Now we're down to resolutions, as Dan has already forewarned you, we're going to have Resolution 26-2024 Transfer Funds.
Yes, thank you, sir, this is a normal business, it's, we had, we put in a sidewalk at the Memorial Park, if you've noticed lately, last couple of memorial services we've had, but the, some people's had trouble getting up on to the Memorial Park area, so the sidewalk will help that, we need to transfer some funds from the Heritage Trail over to Parks Material, and we also had a request to transfer funds just from a line to the line that would take care of the cars that were equipped back in March, we were short on those some, but this will take care of it all, it's been budgeted and it's all, we're good to go with it.
Okay, so summarize here, we have two transfers under the same resolution?
Yes, sir.
Okay, one from the police department, from line to line for vehicles?
Right.
And one in the Parks Department from line to line?
Yes, sir.
Sidewalk contract.
Sidewalk, my turn, yes.
Okay. Questions from council? And since this is internal, is there action from council?
I'll make, I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 26-2024 Transfer of Funds for both Parks and Recreation as well as the Police Department.
Second.
Motion is second, when you're ready.
Dan Swaffer?
Yes.
Trevor Sager?
Yes.
William Ellis?
Yes.
Scott Oldham?
Yes.
Pamela Samples?
Yes.
Transfer carries.
Moving to the next resolution is 2027-2024, I'm sorry, it's 27-2024 Additional Appropriations.
Yes, this is a disappropriation for the high crimes tech unit for interns. We have no, we have two and no more than three that will be paying a minimum amount of fee to, to come and help with, with that situation. We estimated it very highly and we will not have to ask for any more money for that for the rest of the year.
Okay, so this is just sort of cleanup from the transfer and adoption?
Yes.
Questions from council?
Jimmy Noel, just to be clear, this is the amount we will get, I mean, we are getting reimbursed for anything we spend for this?
Every cent of it, yes.
All right, from the county, all right.
We just have to provide the line item.
Correct.
Okay, is there motions from council?
I'll make a motion to approve additional, Resolution 27-2024 Additional Appropriations.
Second.
Motion is second, when you're ready.
Dan Swaffer?
Yes.
Trevor Sager?
Yes.
William Ellis?
Yes.
Scott Oldham?
Yes.
Pamela Samples?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Tonight ordinance on first reading, ordinance 2024-15 to amend the salary ordinance 2023-18 to add HTCU, which is High Tech Crime Unit interns in part-time position.
Yes, this is making me also, you'll see, you have a memorandum of understanding in front of you there that indicates that we're going to pay two, no more than three interns to assist with the high crimes unit. Darla may have some more information on the MOU, but these individuals are students, they'll be paid $10 an hour, no more than 25 hours a week, they will be an official employee of the town, and will be taken care of by what form number? The W, what do they take?
We'll be issuing them W2s.
W2s, W2s, so, again, this is all, and I'd like to request the council to backfill, or so to speak, this from July the 1st on.
To make it retroactive.
Make it retroactive, yes, thank you.
Okay, and for those of you wondering, we're doing this now because it's related to the previous resolution, so we'll knock them both out at the same time.
And if the council chooses to, you can follow the procedure allowed by statute to pass the ordinance on first reading, if you desire.
So first, is there a motion concerning taking this to second reading? Or a motion be submitted to pass it on first reading?
I move that ordinance number 2024-15 to amend salary ordinance 2023-18 to add HTCU interns part-time position be submitted for first reading.
Second.
Okay, you have a motion is second, roll call please.
Dan Swaffer?
Yes.
Trevor Sager?
Yes.
William Ellis?
Yes.
Scott Oldham?
Yes.
Pamela Samples?
Yes.
When, when did you say retroactive that?
July 1st.
July 1st, does that need to be in there?
Your motion now would need to be in there for this one.
It's in the MOU.
It's in the MOU as well.
Then it's backdated.
All right, so we're okay?
Yes.
I move that ordinance number 2024-15 to amend salary ordinance 2023-18 to add HTCU interns part-time position be adopted on the same day it which is introduced.
Second.
Motion is second, when you're ready.
Dan Swaffer?
Yes.
Trevor Sager?
Yes.
William Ellis?
Yes.
Scott Oldham?
Yes.
Pamela Samples?
Yes.
Thank you.
There's a third step.
Got to go one more.
And finally, I move for Resolution 2024-15 to be adopted.
Second.
Just to correct, it's ordinance, right?
Oh, ordinance, yes, ordinance, correct.
You have a motion is second, when you're ready.
Dan Swaffer?
Yes.
Trevor Sager?
Yes.
William Ellis?
Yes.
Scott Oldham?
Yes.
Pamela Samples?
Yes.
Okay, so that match, that motion and ordinance passes in its totality. Now we're going to jump back to Resolution 28-2024 for the annexation of 5517 North Union Valley Road.
At the Plan Commission's last meeting, they voted to send the proposed annexation of 55 North, sorry, 5517 North Union Valley Road to the town council with a positive recommendation for annexation, and as you can see from your materials, it is a petition that was filed by Value Built Incorporated. It is a parcel of land that is approximately 6.23 acres of land into the town of Ellisville, and you have been provided as part of your packets for this evening, the resolution, the fiscal plan, and the ordinance adopting the, or approving the voluntary annexation of that property into the town.
Okay. Going to have to have a little help on this one as to where we go from here on this, other than it's on the resolution.
The resolution is to approve the fiscal plan.
Right.
And the ordinance is to actually approve the actual annexation itself.
Okay, that's what I'm wondering, thank you so much. All right, are there questions from council about the first resolution? Concerns, questions? Okay, is there movement there on?
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 28-2024 for the annexation of 5517 North Union Valley Road.
Second.
Motion is second?
Dan Swaffer?
Yes.
Trevor Sager?
Yes.
William Ellis?
Yes.
Scott Oldham?
Yes.
Pamela Samples?
Yes.
And now we're moving on to ordinances on second reading, again, we paired these a little bit differently. Ordinance 2024-16 is the annexation of 5517 North Union Valley Road.
I can go ahead and address that, Darla, Darla stated the petition is with Value Built Incorporated to annex 6.23 acres of land at 5517 North Union Valley Road. Annexation area is 59% contiguous to town at Ellisville, and 100% of the property owners are parties to the petition. The property is currently zoned AG/RR agricultural/rural reserve by Monroe County, and it's recommended to be designated as residential one, single-family residential upon annexation. Property will be located in Council Ward 4, property serviced by water, the annexation will not require any capital projects to extend services, and any cost for extension utilities is borne by the developer. Town will provide police, fire, EMS, and other governmental services immediately upon annexation, and staff recommends favorable recommendation with R1 zoning. And not favorable recommendation, approval, sorry.
Okay.
It's Plan Commission language.
Questions or comments from council? Okay, questions or comments from the public? Okay. And we'll move back to council now. Is there action on this?
I'll make a motion to approve ordinance 2024-16, annexation of 5517 North Union Valley Road.
Second.
Dan Swaffer?
Yes.
Trevor Sager?
Yes.
William Ellis?
Yes.
Scott Oldham?
Yes.
Pamela Samples?
Yes.
Thank you.
Now we're going to move on to the one that everybody's probably interested in this evening, this is ordinance 2024-17, repealing the town of Ellisville, Indiana zoning ordinance, subdivision control ordinance, and maps, and adopting the town of Ellisville, Indiana Unified Development Ordinance and Maps in public hearing thereon. So, how we're going to do this when it comes time for public comment, is you'll have three minutes to actually do the public comment, and that will be your time limit at that point in time. We're going to use a couple minutes here to see a presentation on it, and we'll move to council after that. You want to do it a different order?
Denise, extra copy of the zoning maps.
I'll give you mine.
What's that?
I'll just give you mine.
Okay, thanks. I'll mark out. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone, my name is Sean Dade, and I'm with Taylor Seaford Williams Design Group, and I was helped, I helped facilitate the draft of this Unified Development Ordinance we'll talk about tonight. I've got a few slides to go through to kind of explain what the Unified Development Ordinance is, and then afterwards I'll be available for any questions or comments. So there are two items to consider tonight, the first is the Unified Development Ordinance, the second is the Ellisville zoning map, both received unanimous favorable recommendation from the Plan Commission on July 12th. First of all, we'll talk about the UDO. So what exactly is a UDO? It is simply a zoning ordinance and subdivision control ordinance in one document, which is Unified Development Ordinance. How is this different from your current ordinances? Each district will kind of have an at-a-glance summary. The land uses will be updated and revised to be more contemporary. We've also made sure that state law and case law has been updated, and as well as, and very importantly, objectives from the comprehensive plan have been incorporated as well. We also have made it to where information is easier to find, I always like to say, if my mom can understand what we're trying to do, we've done a good job. References are hyperlinked in throughout the document, so if you see a reference, you can click on the document, on the reference, and it'll take you to the document place where that reference is. So what was this process? So, the UDO process started in September of 2023, we met seven times with the technical committee throughout the course, and I want to thank the technical committee members that spent their, you know, volunteered their time and dedication to their community in making this document so. Members included members of town council, Plan Commission, local developers, staff, as well as members of the BZA. We also held a public workshop on June 27th, here in this room, to highlight some of the changes in some of the document items. So there are nine chapters in the UDO. Chapter one is our administration and general provisions, two zoning districts, three are standards for specific uses, these are some uses that may require additional standards based upon their impacts. Chapter four is our site development and structure standards. Five and six are your subdivision control chapters, so five is subdivision types, six is subdivision design standards. Chapter seven is our procedures chapter. Chapter eight discusses non-conforming structures, lots, and uses, and then chapter nine is our definitions. So chapter one includes language on statutory authority, and establishes provisions for administration of the UDO for the administrator, for the advisory Plan Commission, and the BZA, and it also provides transition policies for pending applications and plaits and permits that have already been issued. Chapter two is our zoning districts, so this establishes those districts, it describes the official zoning map, it also sets policy for administrative decisions on land uses not listed in the UDO. Development and uses of land are constantly evolving and changing, and so we wanted to make sure that there was guidance for staff and a process for them to follow that outlines how that functions. And it also includes criteria for classifying unlisted land uses, so the same reason holds, is if it's not listed in here, we want to make sure there's provisions for staff and a roadmap for them to follow. So how does this change our current zones here in Ellisville? The answer is, it's very little. Originally, currently, there are three municipal zoning districts that were not used, and have, my understanding is not been used for a while, so we've stricken those. There were two agricultural zone districts, and we've combined them into one. We have combined the C2 and C3 districts into one C2 district, and we've also added a new downtown district, and this was really driven by the objectives and goals of the comprehensive plan, and makes it a little bit more feasible to help redevelop some of those properties down there. Chapter three, this is where our standards for specific uses come into play, and on the screen are all the list, all the specific uses that are listed in chapter three, and I'll highlight a couple of those, so the first one is accessory dwelling units. So these are your granny flats, your mother-in-law suites, these are detached structures that function as small dwelling units, they're accessory in nature to the primary structure, and they also have requirements for things such as, and I'll flip to the page now. Maximum and minimum sizes, maximum height, structure requirements, we want to make sure that we also have prohibited structure types, so things like recreational vehicles and shipping containers and box trucks can't be used as these, these are supposed to be accessory to the, to the primary structure. We also want to make sure there's provisions for sanitation and sleeping quarters that are, that are in there. The next one is home-based businesses. There are two items on the screen that look similar, home-based businesses and home occupations. Home-based business, a good way to think about this is the one-room salon in, up someone's house, or a doctor's office in their basement. This is accessory to the primary use of residential dwellings. This does require a special exception in the residential districts, and it has to meet all of these sections, everything in chapter three that's listed not only has to meet the standards that are respective of this chapter, but also everything else in the UDO. Home occupations are different in that they're the, I work from home in my spare bedroom, and there's no impact to my neighbors. So there's a slight, you know, slight difference in those, and, and, you know, home-based businesses, we have, you know, we, we have caps on, on number of employees that may work there, number of clients that may visit, hours of operation that they may offer, operate, because again, this is supposed to be accessory and incidental to the primary use, which is a residential dwelling. Another one is short-term rentals, and again, this is a little bit different, these are your Airbnbs, this is, this is for non-owner occupied rentals. Indiana code allows for owner occupied dwellings to operate as a short-term rental without any potential for additional standards, these are, I buy my neighbor's house to rent out as an Airbnb, so we have things such as occupancy requirements, permitted structure types, prohibited structure types. The big thing is that there will be an annual registration permit that is required for these, these types of uses. Chapter four is our site development standards, this is everything that is required when a new site is developed. So things like landscaping and buffer standards, parking and loading standards, as well as sign standards. Chapter five is our subdivision regulation of subdivision types, this outlines what are exempt subdivisions, minor residential subdivisions, major residential subdivisions, and commercial and industrial subdivisions. Chapter six is our design standards for these subdivisions, so establish standards for blocks and lots, sidewalks and trails, has, has new standards for subdivision entrances, and it also provides a minimum public road design standards amongst some of the new standards for this chapter. Chapter seven is our procedures chapter, and this outlines all the application procedures that would come through Planning and Zoning's office, as you can see, we have flow charts that are included for clarity, as well as the text that accompanies them. We also establish standards for document and drawing requirements, complaints and violations, as well as outline required sureties for development in Ellisville. Chapter eight is our non-conforming chapter, so this defines what legal non-conforming versus illegal non-conforming is, it establishes standards for non-conforming lots of record, non-conforming uses of land, things like that. And then chapter nine is our definitions, that includes graphics to explain terminology, it provides guidance on the words such as shall, and may, must, and it also establishes standards for divining terms that may not be listed in the UDO. Second, we're going to discuss the Ellisville zoning map. So, again, the major map updates is introducing this new, excuse me, this new D1 zone district downtown.
Chris, can you move the zoom over a little bit because most of that, or whomever is doing the, because a lot of that map's covered? Thank you.
Thank you. So, properties along Sale Street are going to be zoned D1 Downtown 1, and then also some properties along Indiana 46 in the downtown area will be zoned from C2 to C1 currently, and even currently in the current code, C2 allows for things like a Walmart to go down into that area, and so we really wanted to make sure that the scale of that area was respected and make it more of a neighborhood commercial style uses that were allowed in that area. So as you can see, the dark purple highlight color along Sale Street is that new D1 Downtown District, and then that lighter pink is the C1 District. Those are the major changes in these areas, so we've downzoned some of it to C1, the uses don't really, aren't really affected, it's more about the scale of the, the structure. Again, so tonight, we are requesting adoption of the UDO and zoning maps, again, it did get a unanimous favorable recommendation on July, excuse me, July 11th, not July 12th, July 11th, there was one amendment to that, and there was a typo in one of the graphics on page 89 of 209, and it was updated to reflect the language in the table. And with that, that's all the slides I have, and I'm open to questions, I can sit down, and you all can come back to me with questions, however you all need, would like to proceed.
We'll have questions for the gentleman. Seeing none, why don't we reserve the right to recall you here after we hear from some of the folks? Okay, and since this is a public hearing, we're going to move to the public here in just a minute, but before we do that, Mike, do you want to say anything?
Yeah, I'd like to give you a little backdrop on what Sean just presented, we actually started talking about this in '22. Once we decided we was going to have a steering committee and, and go through this UDO process, they had at least six three-hour meetings. So, the steering committee had homeowners, Assistant Planning Director was a part of it, we had the representatives for the Chamber of Commerce and Main Street, who also was a Realtor, we had a couple of local active developers that are very active in our town right now. We had a business owner and a former town board member, we had two board members on the steering committee, as well as two Plan Commission members that were also on the BZA, we had an engineer, an attorney, town manager, and planning director that was involved in it, so it was a pretty good group of people that we, that we formed for the steering committee, and so since then, you know, we, we, we got the draft together, I believe Denise, Sean, and Darla went through it page by page, I think they spent about six hours trying to vet anything that might pop up. We sent it out publicly several different ways, we delivered it to all the town board members, and we had a public meeting on 6/24, and hardly anybody showed up, I don't know if there was anybody from the public that showed up to it. We, so, so anyway, so we really think we went through a thorough process to get to this point, and so, one of the things that we, a step further we went, I asked Darla if she would send you a letter indicating if there were parts of this that we didn't like, which I think it's a pretty good ordinance, but if there are parts that you don't like, there's ways to amend this, this is a living document, it's meant to be changed, and it's not, you know, set in stone ever, it's not meant to be set in stone, so I just wanted to point that out, so, with that?
Sure, absolutely.
Darla and Mike, in this, it looks like that any changes later though have to be initiated by the Plan Commission, not the council, is that correct?
In the council, there is a procedure in the Indiana code, and I provided you with a copy of that statute that allows the council to ask the Plan Commission to initiate a change, and that is section, Indiana code 36-7-4-602.
Now, is that, is that us allowing it, I'm talking about if we, let's, if we pass this hypothetically tonight, and we wanted to make a change later, like you, like you had said, Mike, according to this, that if the council adopts a proposal, the zoning ordinance can be amended later, as has happened in the past, by the Plan Commission making a proposal for change to a specific section of the code, which then goes to the council for consideration. So in that case, would all changes have to originate with the Plan Commission?
No, under 36-7-4-602B, it says the Plan Commission may initiate the proposal, under the advisory planning law, any participating legislative body may initiate the proposal and require the Plan Commission to prepare it.
Okay.
So that's a different code section than what you're going under tonight.
Gotcha.
That is for changes to certain specific sections of the zoning ordinance, that's the procedure you'd follow. The Plan Commission may not like your suggestion, but they have to hear it, and they could maybe send it back to you with a negative recommendation, but they have to hear it, and they have to send it back to you for a vote, after their recommendation.
And even if they have a negative recommendation?
Correct, it comes back to you.
Gotcha, okay.
Or if they don't action within 90 days, it comes back to us automatically, right?
Um, under this. Um, under this particular section, um, no, I think they're just required to initiate the proposal and send it to you.
So I might want to say one more thing. So there, the process is there, and we would say that maybe there are some things that people want to change in this. And obviously, one of the things that has been a lightning rod, for instance, is the flags. And the current ordinance says there are certain flags that are exempt, but nowhere does it say that all the rest of the flags need permits. So maybe we want to change the word on that. I don't think the staff or anybody with Ellisville are interested in permitting flags. So that might be, that's good, for instance, of where we might want to start with something that would go back to the plan commission and then come back and we can change later. I would say.
When you say permitting, just for the public, you don't mean issuing per, you mean issuing permits, not allowing?
Yeah. Yeah. I mean, it's unenforceable anyway.
Right.
So it's a good example of why we might need to use that code.
Other questions from council?
Yes. Wait. I have one. Okay. On the chicken deal, we had, we had an ordinance for the chickens, and then this council changed it again. Now I get this, and it's changed again. So therefore, there's going to be a problem, because it's like, first, we tell people they can have this many chickens, and they can have, do certain stuff with their chickens, or sit there or stuff wherever. Then we changed it again to make more chickens, and added to it that they didn't have to be pinned in if they couldn't fly, if you had them fenced in. Well, now we get this. Now they've changed the amount of chickens again, and then they have different qualifications, like 35 foot from this, 35 sitting from the side. Like me, I'm bedded up against a field, the county. So it's like, do I need 35 foot from the county? I mean, who's back there in the county that's going to care about my chicken? So I don't like that. I like the old way we had it. As council went through, we changed it, and that's where I like it.
Okay. And this would be where I'll probably not talk anymore after this. You know, the ordinance is good, and there are things people are going to want to change. It's really hard to audit by group. It's sausage-making at its worst, and so it takes time. The ordinance itself is solid. I think we should trust the process. And, you know, it's a baby that's been in the water for a long time. I think the water needs change, but I don't think we should throw the baby out with the bottom, with the water, that water. So what you, that would be something you would propose. You can go back and take care of it later, and all these things can be maybe confined to one or two meetings, and we can go through them, and there's a process. But if some of them pass, and then some of them done pass, and then they want to change something else, I really would appreciate if everybody recognized this as a good document with maybe a couple of flaws or things that could be changed.
I mean, because you see what the problem, like, if we go by, everybody's already went, then by the new ordinance that we made, and then we change it, and then these people are by the other ordinance, then what are you going to do? Knock on their door and say, whoops, no, we changed it. You're going to cut down however many chickens? I mean, it's, it could run into some problems for people.
I understand.
Because not everybody that's really not involved in politics or anything like that knows about all this. So like, they see, oh, my neighbor's got chickens, so I can get chickens, that they don't realize maybe there's rules to it. You know what I mean?
So.
Like me, when I first moved to my house, and I was younger, I didn't care about politics, didn't care about anything like that. So I figured I'd do what I want on my property. If I wanted to build a deck, or if I want to do this or that, I wouldn't worry about getting a permit, because I didn't know anything about it. That was my property. Now I find out later that, oh, no, if you want to do this or that or that. Just confusing for people.
So let me ask this question. I may short-circuit some of this discussion, and it's a question from Ms. Brown. Assuming we were to pass the UDO this evening, assuming, could we then, and you've already answered my question about it's an all or nothing proposition. We either have to pass it all, or we don't pass any of it and send it back to the plan commission. And I'm struggling with how to word this appropriately. Can we pass the UDO in that provision, however, immediately issue a stay or ordinances on any enforcement for a period of time pending changes? So that way, you have most of it enforced, but we have declared the moratorium. We will not enforce these provisions for 90 days, 120 days, whatever else, to let us get the ordinance right.
Well, you've got a couple of different things in there. I don't think the statutes anticipate that it gets passed in part. I think either you pass it.
No, I agree with that, yeah.
Or you send it back to the plan commission with your suggestions for changing it. I guess that's a question for Denise, and maybe there are certain sections of the code you may not want to enforce for a while.
Right, right.
Like maybe the flag ordinance, like maybe the chicken ordinance.
The flag, the chickens, a couple others.
That would be a separate decision by the town council.
That way, it's enforced in its totality, but enforcement has stayed on a select number of portions of it until we can dial it in with the plan commission.
I think you could do that and give that suggestion to the planning director.
Okay.
Yeah, and would like to also add that I think that this is just another part of the step. You know, it's the first time you guys have seen this. I think this is part of the step, you know? We send it back to the planning commission with your suggestions, and it goes to them, and then it'll come back to us for a final vote. I think we've put a lot of time and energy in this to just hurry up and pass it along. I think we just need to take the time and do it right, do it once, and go from there. Yes, it's going to change over time. Things will always change, but this is just another step in the process.
Darla, if we did, you know, Scott said pass it all. Again, I'm not saying that's what's going to happen hypothetically, but then we did stays on certain sections. We're also repealing all the existing ordinances with this.
You're repealing everything except what's set out in the proposed ordinance that I sent you. There are certain sections that you want to leave in there that our, that Taylor Siegler has suggested belong in a standards manual. So you're repealing all of 152 and 153, which, sections 152 and 153 in the Ellisville town code, which are the subdivision regulations and the zoning ordinances, except for what is set out in the ordinance that I proposed for you.
Okay.
But yes, everything else is going to be repealed.
Kind of what I'm talking about, though, is.
But chickens are in a different category, remember? They're under animals, chapter 96.
Right. I guess how I was looking at it is, I think there's probably three or four sections, not truly whole sections, but parts of sections, that some of us or all of us find objectionable and/or in need of some repair. But that said, probably 80 to 90% of this should be in effect. And I'm just struggling to find a way to put the things that need to be in effect in effect and give us time to work with plan commission to get the proper language and dial in those problematic things, versus having to send the entire thing back to plan commission for rework and delaying this even further. Because I think the three or four things that are, in some of our eyes, problematic, can be worked out in fairly short order. So if we stayed enforcement of them for a period of time, that lets the rest of the UDO flow forward, the zoning maps flow forward, and gives us time to fix what we see as issues. Does that make sense?
But I don't like passing something, then say, well, we might, we can work on, there are things we're not happy with, because once it's passed, and then if everybody says, oh, well, no, we like it like that, then there's no chance of trying to get it changed for people that want it changed.
That's why you have the stay on enforcement, where we know we're going to have to fix these things, or at least debate them further. There is no way we're going to go tonight and debate nine sections.
What is there a hurry that, like, in planning, it'd be another month, and then right after that, we'll have a meeting to vote on? Why is it such a hurry that we couldn't wait four or five more weeks?
I don't think we've been in such a hurry. We started this in '16.
But I mean, from now, from right now.
Well, but from now is when we were going to pass the UDO. Delay is not progress, and we are in the middle of building boom in our town, and I think the new ordinances are appropriate for our future. And this is not the first time we've seen this. You've all seen it. You had it. You passed it. You've already passed it once.
Right. We went by, because this is a big thing, and I have since that time reread and reread. I did before. But that is a lot of information, and some of the stuff, when I first read it, it didn't seem like it was when I went back and read it. And so therefore, during planning, we did do like a small thing, and that part was good. But 209 pages of little things when you're not used to it. You know, people that deal with this all the time, it's easy to look at it and read it and go on. I have reread and reread and reread this. And some of the stuff, I didn't take it as when I read it the first time, but when I read it the second time, it was different. You have to really read through it. I mean, you can't just like read through it like a book and move on. You have to go back sometimes.
And Pam, I agree with what you're saying, too, because, you know, Mike, we have been working on this for, you know, a year or better. It's just one of those things that, you know, it's, we've got a new fresh set of looks, eyes looking at it again tonight. So, I mean, I'm like Pam, I don't see any harm in sending it back, because even, they may even come up with a new aspect or something of it, too, before it comes back to us, so.
So if that happens, we might come back to the board, and then they really don't like the new ordinance, and then it goes back to the plan commission, and like I said.
But that's just hypotheticals. I mean, right now, it's right. Right now, we're just dealing with issues when we obviously, and I've been looking at this document probably more than any of you. Obviously, after we, I'm listening to everyone, and we haven't heard from the public yet, I realized there's some things that aren't right in here. And this is a big document, and waiting another five weeks is not going to kill us.
Well, may I say something? As I understand the statutes, if the council sends it back to the plan commission with a rejection or amendment, plan commission is really limited on what they can do with it at that point. They can either accept the rejection or amendment. I don't think there's any provision in the code for the plan commission to tinker with it any further. In other words, I don't think if council sends it back and says, we don't like A, B, and C, I don't think the plan commission can say, okay, we'll accept your changes to A, B, and C, but now we want to change X, Y, and Z.
No.
And because I think you're going to get lost.
Right.
In the back and forth, and then you're going to lose track of your time limits. So I think if you send it back to the plan commission, you have to tell them specifically, and then the plan commission's role at that point is to decide yes or no. I don't think the plan commission can really tinker with it any further.
No, but they can look at that, say, we're looking at A, B, or C, and we take your recommendations on C, and they could come back talking about C, saying, well, yeah, that sounds good, but maybe it should be like this. So, yeah, I'm not saying they would create a whole new set of problems. I'm just saying they would answer the issues we send back to them, and they may have an opinion on those.
I would suggest we, this is just for me. I want to hear with the public.
Right.
Because we have a lot of different set of eyes looking at this, and before we really get into the weeds discussing what could be done or what we should do, I mean, we kind of need the feedback, and they're here wanting to give it to us.
Can I say something really quick? When you were talking about enforcement, I have no intention, as soon as it passes, to start enforcement. It will take some time and look at the procedures.
I think this, though, requires council giving you direct orders not to enforce, not your intentions.
Okay.
Because that way, council controls what the timeline is and what is not. With that said, is there any further council comments? Okay, we're going to move to the public now. We'll do this, again, you have a three-minute time limit for each person speaking. For those on Zoom that want to speak, go ahead and raise your hands, and we'll call on you as we can. Use the raise your hand function on the bottom bar of the Zoom, and we'll go from there.
All right. No questions on Zoom.
Yeah, I figured you would. Is there anyone in, in the building that wants to speak first? Step up to the mic, please. Need to sign in, give us your name, and we'll start your clock.
Hi, I'm Bob Bristow, and I sent an email to Mr. Ellis earlier this past week, and it was about the sign ordinance portion. Specifically, I told Mr. Ellis they may want to look at the constitutional aspects of that, specifically the First Amendment and the freedom of speech. I've been assured that that's probably not going to pass anyway. However, I would like to make a recommendation that the entire ordinance not be adopted tonight and sent back for review. So that's all I've got to say.
Thanks, sir. Jim Perry on Zoom. You can unmute him, and you.
Yes, I think this is a great progress. One of my concerns is if somebody could talk about, I know 4.8, which was most relevant to me, it's the blight and property maintenance standards, talk about the administration, because clearly, the issue of whether this works or not is whether it's properly administered. It's not merely getting the policy right, it's also administration of the policy. Somebody could talk to me about who the administrator is, and how properties will be declared blighted, because a number, part of the reason I'm interested in this is because there are a number of properties in District 3 that were severely blighted and have dead cars in the block and other things, and I'm hoping that we can eliminate some of those eyesores, what I would call public nuisances, but I would like to hear more about the quotation of the details in this 4.8.
This is for comments, Mr. Perry. We'll try and answer your questions later as we can, but do you have further comment, or was that it?
No other comments, but clearly, if we don't have sort of a good plan to implement provision 4.8, it's meaningless. All right. Thank you. Anyone else in the building?
And again, if you're on Zoom and want to speak, go ahead and use the raise your hand function so we can call on you. Go ahead and sign in, give us your name, please.
Good evening. My name is Kari Bennett, spelled K-A-R-I-B-E-N-N-E-T-T. I work for Habitat for Humanity of Monroe County. I've been hearing some good things about how the town of Ellisville oversees development, and so I decided to take a look at this draft UDO. Some of the things that struck me when I looked at this is, first of all, the length of the UDO. It's 209 pages. Boy, that sounds like a lot, doesn't it? But it's still well organized and concise. By comparison, the Bloomington UDO is 470 pages long. The draft Monroe County CDO is 460 pages long. The upshot of that is, it does make it a lot easier for folks to be able to understand how all of the pieces fit together, just simply because you're not wading through as much paper. Zoning and planning ordinances are intended to implement the vision of a comprehensive plan. I was also pleased to see that Ellisville's comprehensive plan is from last year, 2023. By comparison, Bloomington dates back to 2018, and Monroe County states back to 2012. And a lot has changed in the past eight to 12 years. I was also happy to hear the comment about this being a living document. That's a wise approach, because implementation is going to reveal unintended consequences. No matter how hard you look and how many times you review a draft, it will be different once it actually is implemented. The overall effect of this is a promotion of responsible development, and that includes affordable housing, which is the business that Habitat for Humanity is in. So I just wanted to share those, those thoughts. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Am I missing anything? Am I missing anyone on Zoom, because I can't honestly see it from here?
I do not see anybody.
Okay. Krista, you want to go ahead? Should I unmute her?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, good evening. I would have to speak tonight, I wear a two-hat in the community, I'm the chamber board president, but I'm also a part of the Envision Ellisville Advisory Council. And I want to speak tonight wearing my hat of Envision Ellisville. I know we have some chamber board members in the audience who claim to speak. I obviously am in favor of passing the UDO. This is a foundational document. When we go back to 2019, we started with the community-wide visioning process for Envision Ellisville. We identified in the very beginning that in order to create the kind of community that we want to have in Ellisville, we have to have some foundational pieces in place. That included the comprehensive plan, the land use plan, and now the UDO. And so this is to me, I like what Dan said about this is just the next step in the process. I think you all know me well enough to know that I'm very thoughtful. I like to think things through carefully. And I think there are some things that need to be addressed. There's language that needs to be addressed. There's some confusion around things like yard signs and flats and what being intended, and that needs to be addressed. I do believe it's going to be a much easier process rather than the back and forth that Charles Goshu, where we all might get lost in that process, and it could take a long time. I think it's going to be faster, efficient, passed tonight. And then we as a community come together, identify that feedback, and then we go through that process of making those changes. And so I just want to share my support. I've been involved in this since 2019. I think our future is here, knocking on our door. And I think this is a really important piece that you need to step over with. So that's all I have to say tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. And Krista, could you go ahead and state your full name for us, for the record?
Yes, Christopher Curtis.
Okay, move on now to someone within the building.
Hello, my name's Thomas Landis, and I'm a member of the community. We own some property here as well. And I learned about the new UDO and the Herald Times. And I want to speak in support of the housing component of this. I know there's lots of components when it comes to a UDO, but I was especially pleased to hear the efforts in the work with housing density as a by right option. What we know is that in this nation, we are underbuilt, tremendously underbuilt. And we know, we see those problems in the daily lives of our residents in the county, in Ellisville, and in the city of Bloomington, all over the state, all over the country. So many of our core fundamental human experiences begin with where we live and how we live. Where we live shapes our fundamental reality and our paradigm in so many powerful ways that I only have beginning, have just begun to start learning about. And one of the things that helps, so valuable with affordable housing, is density. When we can build a bit tighter, we still get privacy. We still get ownership. We still get equity. We get so much great value out of real estate, by the nature of real estate being what it is. And we can build closer together in a way that honors everybody, and it honors the process of ownership, of building wealth, and it honors the environment as well. I love seeing opportunities where we can look to impact lots of, lots of features of our lived experience. And so anyway, I'm supporting the tighter, the tighter lots. Big yards are an old, old thing. They're a relic of the past, and I just love that we're beginning to move away from that. And I think it's such an insightful and enlightening perspective to take for this town envisioning the next step of the future. So thank you for that component.
Thank you.
To that, that's why people live in the country, because evidently people do like big yards.
All right. So we'll go back to Zooms. We have, I'm sorry, can you pronounce my name? I can't see it. Pam Fergo. Pam, did you want to speak? Okay, we'll come back to Pam, so go ahead and keep her muted, and we'll go back in council chambers.
Hello, I'm Ernest. Some of you might know me. I did work on this as part of the steering committee. Obviously, you know, we covered a lot over, you know, 20-plus hours, over, you know, seven or eight months of this process. And no document is going to be perfect. This one did a great job of, you know, taking, you know, input, you know, and, you know, suggestions, and concrafting it to what, you know, we felt. And then it, you know, it just kept getting molded over time. And it wasn't just a once-through. There was, you know, a lot of thought and effort that went through in revising it. The other thing that I would comment is that when we went through, you know, the sign chapter, if you will, it wasn't something that, you know, any of us took, and I think, you know, William was there, Deanne might have been there, as part of the steering committee, none of us took an approach against the First Amendment. None of us had that in mind. It was something that, you know, we just, you know, wanted to create something that was, you know, fair and good for everybody. And, you know, not every document ends up being perfect, but this one does a pretty good job of, you know, creating an improved UDO for the town. But, you know, it might not be perfect, but sending it back and losing a lot of the progress that we've created might be a disservice to, you know, the process. Thank you.
And Ernest, we need your last name, please.
She. Thanks, guys.
All right, do we have someone on Zoom? Let's try Pam one more time. Pam, are you there?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Hi, I'm a resident of kind of Ellisville for approximately four years. I guess my question, does he, I'm not familiar with the UDO or anything really. I'm having issues with communication, I guess, as a resident. And I'm curious as to how things are sent out to the public or the town to respond. I notice that attendance is low from the public, and can we improve on this so that we can have more public input, more, more public knowledge of what's happening in our town?
I do have something later on the agenda to hopefully address some of that. But it will happen in the UDO discussion tonight.
Okay, thank you.
Is that the end of the round, ma'am?
Yes, thank you.
Okay. We'll go back into any council chambers, and let me remind everyone, this is not question-answer session. This is a time for you to make a comment. So we'll move back into the chambers.
Hello, my name is Cameron Gentry. While I appreciate that the need for UDO for Ellisville as it expands to have a cohesive structure as, as more buildings begin to grow, I believe that the ordinance has several issues, specifically Chapter 4, Section 9, sign standards. Please ask three key areas where it's wrong. It's poorly written. I believe it violates several portions of the First Amendment. And I believe that it doesn't promote the well-being of the community. To start off, I believe it's poorly written. And the prime example of this is if you look at page 98, where underneath "Sign Inspection, Maintenance, and Removal," Part B, it says, "If illegal signs are not be retrieved from the administrator within 15 days." Immediate typo right there. Further, I believe it has vague language. As an example, if you look at the definition of "human signs", "signs worn or held by a person unless located outside of the right-of-way and during business hours." This applies that these, or sorry, this portion is underneath the prohibited sign types. Again, "worn or held by a person unless located outside during the right-of-way and during business hours." Business hours is, to my knowledge, not defined within this document. And it implies that you wouldn't be allowed to hold a sign held by a person outside business hours, which I believe is far too restrictive. The definition of sign, I believe that the way that this ordinance defines sign is way too verbose and just not, not natural. The sign is defined as "any name, number, symbol, identification, description, display, graphic, or illustration which is affixed to, painted on, or is represented directly or indirectly upon a structure, parcel, visible from any public right-of-way, which directs attention to an object, product, place, activity, person, institution, organization, or business. This definition includes backlit plastic panels or strip lighting affixed to any wall or roof where any such panels of lighting serve to identify a business and attract attention rather than to illuminate space working in activity." In my opinion, this definition prohibits displaying of a sign that just says, "The sky is blue." You could have a four-by-eight piece of plywood painted white and say, "The sky is blue." And according to that definition, I don't think it would be considered a sign. Other thing too, it says it requires permits. I don't know if there's going to be fees for permits, if I, if there is. I think that will be ridiculous. In addition, it says, did I say it with me? But I know that it states that a sign, or some temporary signs, can only display it up to four times a year, up to, and up for 30 days straight. So the question is, does that mean that you can only display a temporary sign, a total of four times? Any temporary sign, four times, or an individual temporary sign can only be, can only be displayed up to four times a year, up to 30 days consecutively?
Your time is up, sir. Thank you. Seeing no one on Zoom, we'll move back into the chambers again for the next person. Step up, please. Go ahead and give us your name and sign in, please.
All right, I'm Jeff Shun. And I have been in positions before where I've been involved in making rules, making plans, and making things like that. And I know firsthand that when that's done, there are a lot of things that are left very vague, left open for interpretation, and quite frankly, left over, open for manipulation at a later time. Okay? I strongly urge that this board does not pass this tonight. Sends it back and gets these things lined out. Because once they're down and approved, it's too easy to say, eh, we don't have time to fix that now. We don't have time to change that now. You know, or, or here's why it's this way. Well, let's get that discussion going, get those things fixed. Everybody that's been a proponent of this tonight, I've heard, has that reservation because it's not done. It's not complete. And I think that's a good reservation to have, a hesitation, because if it's not, it's too easy to just shove it aside once it's passed. Oh, we passed that, you know, blah, blah, blah. The next thing is, in a lot of cases, a lot of things get too, too regulated. And I used to build things here in this community, garages specifically. And I always appreciated when I had a customer in Ellisville, because the building codes here were common sense, reasonable building codes. If you had to build it in Monroe County, hardest county in the state to build in. You know, one time I was told about, you need to do a certain type of anchor bolt. And I asked the guy that was telling me this, what specific details do I need to prove to you that my anchor bolt that I use is as good? I committed and came up with that information, presented it to him, and he had no idea what shear strength and pullout strength was. But he was telling me I had to comply to what the ordinance says. But he couldn't tell me what the ordinance's shear strength and pullout strength was. So there's too many things that are just ambiguously passed and regulated that shouldn't be. So I would ask that y'all just table it, put it down, send it back. And personally, I would like a copy of the entire document. I'd like to put my eyes through it.
All right, thanks, sir.
Thank you.
I believe it is. Denise, is it online in its totality?
Yeah.
Anyone else in chambers?
Hi, I'm Valerie Dwar, and I'm a small business owner in Ellisville. But tonight, I'm coming to you from the chamber. The greater, I have a letter that I would like to read to you that we have as a chamber board and chamber membership approved. The Greater Ellisville Chamber of Commerce is supportive of the updated Unified Development Ordinances. As a driving force behind the community visioning process that resulted in the town's envisioned Ellisville plan, the chamber believes that the UDO is critical to fulfilling that vision that was created by our community. Here are the key reasons why we are supportive of affirmative vote by the town council. The UDO was crafted thoughtfully after months of work with a steering team and a seasoned consultant. The steering team included perspectives from the town council, the town plan commission, town staff members, local business, the chamber, and local developers. The UDO provides local developers the criteria and guidelines they need to ensure their development projects align with the envisioned Ellisville plan for strategic growth. A no vote will result in a delay of several months, which makes it difficult for town staff to manage the current situation of multiple inquiries and potential developmental projects that will impact how our town grows. Finally, we recognize that there is some language in the UDO that may be confusing and needs to be clarified. For example, the language regarding flags and signs. We believe the Envision Ellisville Advisory Board and the chamber board can work with the town to address these issues in a modification process that will be easier and faster once the UDO is approved, rather than sending the UDO back to the Plan Commission, which will result in a more complicated and lengthy process. Finally, the chamber is committed to our continued collaboration with the town to implement the envisioned Ellisville plan. We will continue to invest, invest time in the UDO process to ensure we represent not only the voice of business, but of our broader community. Thank you for your leadership and your commitment to implementing our community's vision for the future.
Thank you. Next in chambers, please.
I'm Jerry Sanders. I wanted to go on record saying that my comments do not represent the school corporation. These are my comments as a citizen of Ellisville. So far, just in listening to what's been said, I have not heard anyone say that there are major issues, major problems with the UDO. They seem minor, maybe important to some, but minor and fixable. That so far, like I said, I don't see, or haven't heard, any major issues that would stop the town council from approving the UDO. The town of Ellisville, as a citizen... The town of Ellisville, as a citizen, and I've generally felt this recently, is our community is at a crossroads. The future of Ellisville and our children of tomorrow are depending on what we do. And I would be dismayed if we put a stumbling block or we limited our progress because of a few small issues that would easily be fixed with some further discussion. I would urge the town council to pass this UDO tonight, fine-tune it down the road, and let's keep the progress of Ellisville moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sanders.
I'm Dan Rary. I'm also on the chamber board. There's a saying, excuse me, an old saying that says, "Don't let perfect be the enemy of the good." And I'm guilty of violating that time after time. And what it does is it bogs you down and costs you extra time. I'm afraid if we start bouncing this back and forth between the plan commission and the, and the town council, trying to get it perfect, it'll never be perfect. It isn't perfect now, it's not going to be perfect. But from what I'm hearing, these, and it's a small item to everybody except the person that it affects. And if it affects me, it's a big item. If it affects you, it's a small item. But I think that most of these things can be worked out, probably all of them can be worked out, but it's going to be a lot easier to get the thing in motion and then start working it out. There are some really big projects right now that are kind of dependent upon this. They need to know what's going on, they need to know exactly how they can proceed. So I would urge you to pass this and then very diligently work to get these small items. And I say it's small items, I'm not diminishing anything. These items, whether they're big or small, worked out as soon as we can. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rary. Anyone else in chambers?
Hello, my name is Cory Berger. So I want to let you know that I live here in the community. I think the UDO has a lot of pros in the development and the continued growth of Ellisville. I'm really excited about the envision of Ellisville and being here for a number of years, just the mass improvements that's going on downtown and the trails and the parks and everything like that. It's a huge plus, not just as a property owner, but for people's health, mental health, getting out and everything in the community. I would like to see, you know, it's nice to hear that the UDO is kind of like a living document, like you folks stated earlier this morning, earlier tonight, and it can be fine-tuned. But I think that, you know, it should be passed in a sense, because it's only going to help us grow as a community, and there's a lot, a lot of pros in it. One thing, too, in this area, there's a lot of ran-down buildings, there's a lot of eyesores, and I think in it, some address needs to be put on the property owners about trying to get their areas cleaned up. Either if it's ran-down cars sitting on the property or dilapidated buildings, garages. There are some property owners that live out of state, use those buildings as rental properties, and they really don't know what's going on. We have, I do know there's people in the area that own around 19 buildings within the downtown area, but they live in Ohio. So I mean, there's stuff that's in the UDO that I think can be addressed and could be helped us to beautify the area in a sense. Thank you.
Thank you. Next in chambers.
My name's Clark Greiner. I'm with the Bloomington Economic Development Corporation. Thank you for this opportunity. I wanted to kind of use some of the things that Mr. Rary said, that no process is perfect, no document's perfect. And I think that's kind of what we have going on here. But what I would like to say is that I went through and witnessed the process with the UDO with the city of Bloomington. We're going through it now with the county development ordinances and this, and I can look at all those processes. And I am proud to say that Ellisville is doing a very good job on that. So I think that's a compliment to each and every one of you. And I think, you know, when you look at this from a standard standpoint, I think it's very purposeful. And so the way I see the UDO is I see it as organizational, informational, and a purposeful, documented program to guide future economic development. And that's one of the things that I do for the Bloomington Economic Development Corporation, which we cover all of Monroe County, including Ellisville, the town, the city of Bloomington, as well as the county. I think, you know, the BEDC, we speak to business leaders all the time about development, development standards, and the UDO helps guide and inform them. And so those standards are very important. And I think that moving those along in an efficient, effective manner really helps the developers and the builders know what to do, what to expect when they come into the community. And so the better we can articulate that and get that out to them, the better it is for all of us as we move to bring prosperity to the community. I think that the design and development standards are going to be consistent, and it helps the town planning department, as well as the leadership, to be consistent in that, as well as the administration of that. I think the town of Ellisville also has the good guidelines in place with this, as well as the administrative processes. And, you know, everyone can get heard through the variance process, right? And I think that's one way that we can start to address some of these other things that have come up. So I think that's also very important. And I believe Ellisville's leadership knows when a good idea is still a good idea and knows how to actually take action and make those things happen. So I believe the town council, it'd be my recommendation, that they should consider passage of this. So thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next in chambers? Is there anyone else in chambers and/or on Zoom that wishes to speak?
My name is Zion Sylvester. I'm a concerned citizen from Ellisville. I would say they are right, the UDO is not a perfect document. I don't even think it's a good document. I think it is, has some glaring mistakes. I think it is very anti-first amendment whenever it comes to the provisions regarding signs. I think it harms small businesses, because now they have to go through even more loops and hurdles to just get themselves out there and start up. And I would really hate to see Ellisville be a town where if someone loses their cat, they have to go through legal bureaucracy just to put up a sign to find it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else on chambers and on Zoom?
Hello, my name is Maverick Gardner, and I came here with my friends because I was informed about a new ordinance regarding signs and regulating what kind of signs can be put up. And I read the document, and it's very, it's far too general for my liking. And I think that if we are going to pass an ordinance like this, we should be much more specific in our language about what kind of signs should be allowed or should not be allowed. And I, I just want to say that. Thank you.
Another call for anyone in the audience, in chambers, or on Zoom. Your final opportunity. Seeing none, we'll move back to staff for comments. Anything?
Yeah, I'll say so. I appreciate everybody coming tonight. I have no prejudice against dissent on whatever's happening here. I hate apathy. When we're sitting here all along, sometimes we're doing our business and nobody shows up to tell us what they want. So I sure appreciate everybody coming tonight.
Anybody else on staff? Okay. Back to council for comments.
I would just like to say one thing. I've heard some people say tonight that if we don't pass this tonight, we're going to hinder growth. That's just not true, guys. We do have codes and regulations in place currently, and if a development comes into town and it doesn't abide to buy this new UDO, they do have avenues to go. So we are not halting progress whatsoever. They can go to the BZA, and that has been put into place for years and years. So I feel that, again, once again, we need to send this back to planning and do it that route and do this correctly. Thank you.
Denise, I just have a couple questions were asked, I want to get answers for the public on those questions. Section 4.8, the blight administration. Mr. Perry said he'd like more information on that. What would, is, how do we administer now, and will this change that?
Okay, when we started the UDO process, Shaun asked, what do you want to see from your old code in this code? And the first thing that came to my mind was the blight, because that gives me the ability to react quickly when there's, how can I word, like, more of an emergency nature. So the process is we try to work to get compliance, start out by telling them the problem, and then has it, if we don't get compliance, then we'll declare the property blight, and that allows us to either, depending on the issue, at some point, it's, it's not a fast process.
Right.
We'll either clean it up or ask, tell Darla that we just aren't getting anywhere, we're ready to go to court with.
And I know we've had to do that with a couple of properties. And so does this change any of that process?
No, it does not.
Okay.
And I will say, town councils always ask that we be complaint-driven in our code enforcement, so people need to call if they see something and let us know.
Then the other thing with permits for signs, somebody brought up, like, a great thing I'd never thought about, missing animals. I mean, if someone puts a sign up for that, are we asking them to come in and get a permit?
No.
Okay.
Never have, and we won't.
Okay. But I mean, is that, we won't, but I'm also, when we talk about we're at a crossroads, I fully agree with this. But I'm not just worried about the five people here and the staff here, I'm worried about the five people in 20 years and the staff in 20 years. If they see something written and they say, well, that's in the code, as the gentleman brought up about the garage, I mean, they may not have any clue why it's in the code, but they're going to enforce it. And my concern is, is it written in a way that prevents us from, in 20 years, saying, oh, you've got a lost dog, we're going to fine you because you didn't put up, get a permit for that sign?
No, in the, under the current code, it just won't happen. Two-by-two signs don't require permits, so they're usually about signs that size. And it doesn't require permits at this time for signage going on property. It is clear about home occupation, you're allowed, you know, one sign for that. But, no, and I think that the sign code, when we change it accordingly because of the, the flags, we'll be very clear about that.
Okay, good.
Whatever you, however you decide to proceed with changes.
I understand. My thoughts, and I hear a lot of people say, you know, we're already in this process, and I agree with Dan, it's going to hinder growth. I do not understand how a five-week delay will hinder growth. I really don't. We have to stick the landing on this. We don't want to, I mean, I agree, we don't want to get the perfect and way the good, and it's not going to be perfect. It's kind of like they say, battle plans in a war. Until you actually hit the enemy, you're not going to know all the problems. Well, we've already identified a couple of small problems, so I don't see the harm in fixing those first before we roll everything else out. That's just my thought. I don't, I haven't heard a compelling argument on the downside. But on the other side, if we put this in and somehow we forget to fix it, or things get away from us, other issues come up and this is tabled, I do see a downside for that, because we're putting in stuff we've already know that the public in almost unanimous agreement shouldn't be in there. So let's get it fixed before it's actually in there. So I'm kind of, I'm really leaning towards going back to planning, because I've not heard any compelling reason and any damage. I think developers, and everybody should look at this as, wow, we're really considering all the ins and outs. And that's a good selling point, because if you're trying to sell homes, single-family, high-density or whatever, and you let them know, they're not just going to put an ordinance in and just pass it through, they're going to really deliberate it and follow the legal process. I think that's a selling point for the town of Ellisville, because we're not Monroe County, we're not Bloomington. I think we need to show, show that. And lastly, on the high-density, I fully agree with you. I would say that my thought, I would hope that when developers build, instead of just throwing up apartment after apartment, they consider the fact of affordable housing costs in the sense of multi-story condominiums. It gives you the equity, it gives you homeownership from the start, and we're not going to find those $100,000 starter homes anymore. We can keep looking, it's just not going to happen. This is the best, most effective way to do that. And it's also the best, most effective way to get tax revenue, so the current residents are not paying for the new growth. And I think that's important, too. New growth needs to pay for itself, so we need to make sure it's responsible and it's managed well, that it pays for itself. That's my thoughts.
My question's for Darla again. Darla, can you, the hot button issue is clearly Chapter 4, Section 4.9, sign standards. Heard about it all week, heard about it all night tonight. If this does go back to planning, and we tell them to clean up 4.9, sign standards, do they have the opportunity to fix other things, or is it specifically 4.9 only?
If you send it back to plan commission with instructions to clear up 4.9, that's what their mandate is. But you also have to give them the written reasons, what you want them to do with the sign code. So you can't, you can't just send it back and say, fix it. You have to send it back with the written reasons or what, how you want to see it fixed.
Okay.
So, but yes, if you said, that's all you send back to the plan commission, that's all they can address at their next meeting or within 45 days after the council sends it back to them.
Other comments? Pam? Do you have comments?
Yeah, there's a few things on the permits, too, I don't like.
Okay.
So.
Your mic's off.
Is your mic off? No, it's on.
Okay. Like, I have a problem with, like, the children's roll-staff stands. Are we really going to make them get a permit?
Is that if they have it 21 days or longer?
I mean, for a child? I mean, let's not pick on the children. I don't, you know, I, I don't really think, I don't know how, I've never had one, but I don't really think they would make that much. And then, and then the garage sales, I have a problem with that. It's like, why limit people, how many garage sales they can have? I mean, I don't see a problem if one, starting of the spring, one to have one every Saturday. I can understand the problem, though if they are going to have them once a week, not to leave their stuff out, because I have seen people do that, like, they'll have big tables full of stuff constantly out in the front yard, covered up and stuff. You know, you maybe have to pull it into your garage when you're done, but I don't see a problem with having a limited amount of garage sales.
Yeah, they're limited, currently limited in the existing code also. I have to, I want to say, is it three times a year? I have to look it up, but they are limited in the current.
Well, I, then, well, I don't see a problem with having them. I mean... I mean, if everybody in my addition or the next addition knew me, had one every Saturday, the same people, I don't have a problem with that.
But what if your neighbors did? That's, I'll play devil's advocate. I don't necessarily disagree with you, but what if your neighbors had a problem with someone coming every Saturday to go to a garage sale? And it's.
Well, if it's on their property, I don't care. If they pull up in my yard, park in my yard, yeah, I might have a problem.
And I think that's some of the problems you've had, hasn't it Denise?
Correct, yes.
I mean, where they block the other people. I mean, it's, the.
You can tell them.
Right. I, I will tell you, and I'm just kind of on your, not cutting you off. But it seems like everything in here, especially a lot of that, is because something's happened. But I agree with, and I agree with you, I was going to do that, but that's great. There's other ones on there I think that are good to talk about, too.
Do you have more, Pam?
You had more, didn't you?
Did you have more, you had a comment?
You had more on there?
No, do you have more on your comment?
Yeah, I think you had more on your comment, didn't you? I wasn't cutting you off, I was just adding.
No, I'm just saying, I don't see a problem with it. I don't, if my neighbors, if they're not harming me and they want to have a garage sale, have a garage sale. If they're parked in front of my driveway, then I'll just kind of go over and I'll tell whoever's having the garage sale, whoever, the later people park in front of my driveway. Or I'll ask the people nicely to move. I don't see a problem with having a garage sale. I mean, people's done it for 100 years.
Okay. Is that it?
Yeah.
Okay. Guess I've kind of reserved mine for last. I, I will make a quick comment to my colleague here, however, that every law in the books is because something happened. So whether it's all the way on down, that's, that's why those laws are there. I find myself in a difficult position tonight, one that I'm not usually accustomed to being, which is directly in the middle. I don't do that real well. I do see the, the need to pass this for the stability option because there are developers out there and there are property owners out there who have, undoubtedly, and I don't know of anyone specific, deals in the works that may or may not hinge on what we do tonight. So far, I haven't seen anybody object to the vast, vast majority of this document. The 209 pages, I think it's going to boil down to arguments over about 15 of them, if I counted right. And I may be shortly off. But the majority of the standards that we're talking about, that everyone has an issue with, is in Chapter 4. What I don't want to get into is where this becomes a push-pull between Plan Commission and council and Plan Commission and council. And the developers and landowners having confusing standards that, yes, there's one standard on the book now, but that may be changing because the UDO is on the table and they're, they're making adjustments to it. And again, if we're all concerned over one chapter, then we have the opportunity to fix that chapter. Much again to the gentleman, and I think this was a throwaway comment from you, but it rings true, when you brought up a bolt in a garage. You're the expert on that. This whole document has been put together by my colleagues and a variety of experts. Do I have issues with some of it? Most certainly I do. But are those issues fixable? Yes. It's a question of if we pass it and delay any enforcement mandate that those not be enforced, we have the time to fix those so they're as close to perfect as possible versus starting these timelines of sending it back to, to Plan Commission. They have 35, 45 days. Sending it back to council, we have X number. So the clock starts ticking. And as one of my colleagues brought up, the fact, maybe we need the clock. And in fact, maybe we do, but do we need the clock on all of this document? So I guess where I find myself is kind of what I brought up to begin with, is passing the UDO because I think everyone in this room agrees with, and I'm putting words in people's mouth, the vast majority of the document, other than what we've already talked about. If we stay enforcement of particularly that chapter for a long enough period of time, then there's no harm. Because there's no harm because it's not being enforced and it gives us the opportunity to drill down onto those topics that we're all concerned about. No, I don't want to limit your signs. No, I don't want to limit your flags. No, I don't want to do any of that. But do I also want to cost developers, landowners, sometimes hundreds of thousands or millions of dollars by having shifting UDO to this, to this, to this, and, and causing doubt in the development of Elletsville? No, I don't. We may wind up sending it back to Plan Commission. We may wind up in the middle. We might wind up approving it. I don't know how the rest of my colleagues up here on the board are going to vote tonight. I appreciate everything that everyone said. I hope you see the reasoning behind what we're all talking about. I just think that, at least personally, the vast majority of this document is very well-done. There are certain sections that I vehemently disagree with, but I'm willing to fix those. And if the enforcement of them is stayed by council order, the effect is essentially it is suspended until such a time as we do fix it without having to go immediately back to Plan Commission and gives us the opportunity to work through some of the legalities of it. So that's how I feel. So with that said, one more time to the council. Any further questions or comments?
I do have one, but I don't know if this is the time.
Go ahead.
Okay, so we have those rules because evidently something's happened?
Yeah.
Okay, then evidently we need to make an ordinance that you can't build on town property because the guy up beside me has his fence bolt on the town property.
I think we have.
And I think it needs moved. Because that would be like me going to building on the corner of that town property for me. And I'm going down there building.
I built that cabin over there, that's not, not good enough.
So we move.
Okay.
But you see what I'm saying?
I do.
So the guy beside me, I'm not going to mention the name, but the guy over beside me, he has his fence bolt on town property. And that's a precedent for everybody else because I've had his neighbors complain to me and say, so can I put my fence down there?
I think we have ordinances against that currently.
Now, and then this one needs.
I think the UDO has orders against that as well.
Yeah, it needs dealt with, then it needs moved.
All right. Nope, we were done. So with that said, are there motions from council? Or any action from council?
I move we send documentation back to the Planning Commission with the amendments that we want to change and send the whole UDO back to them.
I'll second.
So you're moving rejection?
Yes. Well, no, I'm moving amendment.
Okay. All right. And just so we're clear, are you going to state tonight what those amendments are? Or is there going to be an expectation that the next meeting, they're going to be written amendments in writing to send back?
Personally, I would like to have them written so we can address.
Well, they have to be written by statute.
Right.
But my question is.
Do it tonight or can we give a few days for us to put it in writing and send it to them that way? Or does it have to be done tonight?
I think it doesn't have to be done tonight. If you're inclined to send it back to the Plan Commission, I think you can come back at the next meeting and approve the written recommendations. Or you can table it entirely, which I think just pushes it off further. So you can do the written recommendations tonight. You can wait till the next meeting to do it and send it back. But just keep in mind your time limits because you have 90 days from July 11th to, to take a vote, which means you have to vote by October 9th.
But let me ask you this. Is there a way that we're going to state, we're going to send this back to planning, but give us two or three days to put in maybe an email form what we want in writing? Or does it have to be done at a public meeting?
I think it should be done at a public meeting, given the discussion that's happened. Because then you're voting by email, which is.
Well, not voting. We're vote, we'd be voting tonight with the recommendations sent to the Planning Commission, but our recommendations would be put down. And I guess we could highlight them.
We could vote on the recommendations at the next meeting.
Okay.
But we'd have to figure out the language, is that what you're saying?
Exactly, that's what I'm saying.
Right.
Language may be a little bit hard to figure out, but.
Right. If you want to, if you want to vote to send it back to Plan Commission and highlight certain areas, that's fine. Then I can come back at the next meeting with the proposed changes that you will then formally vote on to send back to the Plan Commission.
Okay.
I don't, I would rather you didn't just do a blanket vote to send it back.
Right.
And everybody communicates by email and you get something sent back to the Plan Commission that hasn't been formally authorized by all five of you, if that makes sense.
Yeah, I get that.
Does that make sense?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Certainly. Okay, so Dan, you made a motion to reject it?
No.
No, because I.
To amend it.
To amend it, okay. And I'm sorry, was there a second?
Either one of us.
Take your pick, Noel. There's a motion and a second on the floor.
Okay. Dan Swaffer?
Yes.
Trevor Sager?
No.
William Ellis?
Yes.
Scott Oldham?
No.
Pamela Samples?
Yes.
Okay, so it's been returned to the Plan Commission. We will format amendments to it and by the next meeting, publish those. So everybody hears what they are and go forward from there.
Okay, is there anything the council wants me to get started on before the next meeting? I, I get the sign code, but specifically what do you want changed?
That will probably have to require some notes back and forth to get it where we want to go. But clearly the signed ordinance will be one of them and the blighted property standards and some of the other things in Chapter 4. And then I think Pam brought up the animals, too.
Okay, so can we agree then that council will send me their suggestions, send them to me personally so that I can incorporate those for the next meeting?
No later than, say, next Monday?
I would say Friday. Because I, I don't want to draw this out longer than I have.
We can't do it until our next meeting, anyway.
No, but we can get them to give her time to draft and go back and forth for the language.
Okay, so by Friday. I'm sorry, what's the date on Friday?
August the 16th.
So August the 16th. By close of business on Friday. Comments to Ms. Brown as to the amendments?
Okay. And pretty much, Darla, that's what I meant to say in the beginning, that, you know, we needed some time to draft up the wording. And so bringing it up to the next council, I get it. So.
Okay.
I'm fine with all that.
But, but again, just keep in mind, you've got three meetings to do something. You've got the next meeting in August and you've got two meetings in September.
Okay, and when is the Planning Commission meet again?
September 5th.
And when is our next, when's our first meeting in September?
Won't be the 5th.
No, I think it's.
The 9th.
The 9th, okay.
So we still got.
So we could approve it on the 9th if changes are made. Approved.
And what, what was the date? You said October?
It was on the 5th. We can approve the UDO on the 9th.
October 9th. So yeah, we got, we got, we.
If they get it sent back to us, yeah. Okay. We're going to move on from that. And now we're under old business. There is none. Envision Elletsville update, Mr. Rary or anyone else? There is none. Under new business, we're going to enter introduction of Everbridge Emergency Alert Management Systems.
Yeah, we have, Sean Meadows is going to present, along with Amber Bright. They're going to present our emergency management system program where we get everybody signed up so they can get alerts. Sean's our, our billing office manager and I think everybody knows Amber.
Hello. So we're all really excited about our partnership with Everbridge Emergency Alert System. It's very easy. I think in your packet, you should have one of these that shows you can just scan this QR code. And then Amber's going to show you what it looks like when you scan that QR code. We have gotten this out to the public in numerous ways. We've got it on our Facebook pages, our website. We have flyers at local banks, at IGA. We're going to have decals on all of the public works vehicles that will be visible. People can scan and they see those. The notifications are on all of the bills. There's a link on there people can fill out. Did you bring it up yet? So then, once you scan the QR code or you go to our website, click the link, it will bring you to this flyer to where you can scan that code that will take you directly into your account signup. And it's pretty simple, just your, you know, average information, your name, your phone number, how you want the alerts, whether you want them text, email, or a phone call. And this system is, is pretty nice in the aspect that we can send out mass notifications to everybody or we can send out to individuals or we can map out certain locations. So we're pretty excited about it to be able to get that information out.
I think it's a good idea.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
Okay. Counsel questions? Anyone?
Thanks. Great job on that.
You're welcome.
Is all this on the website?
It is. There's a banner at the top of the website that you click. And then it takes you directly to this page.
Okay.
And then you can either, there's a link there or you can scan that QR code and it'll take you directly to your signup.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I've got a separate question. Someone can answer this for you. Who overlooks our website and takes care of everything on that? Denise? All right.
Thanks.
Just curious, thank you.
All right, thank you all for that. Now we're going to move on to the easement for Duke Energy for the DPW building.
That needs to be tabled.
Okay. Requested table, this is their motion for.
I'll make them up. I'll make a motion to table. The table, does easement for Duke Energy, DPW?
Motion, and a second.
Dan Swaffer?
Yes.
Trevor Sager?
Yes.
William Ellis?
Yes.
Scott Oldham?
Yes.
Pamela Samples?
Yes.
Now we're going to move down to the appointment of a new Parks Board member. This is a presidential appointment. And we're going to delay this one because there's several people now interested in this. MOU addendum between Town of Elletsville and Monroe County Prosecutor's Office for the HDCU intern.
Yes, this is continuation of staffing and taking care of the UTCU unit that we have. It's a MOU between the Prosecutor's Office and the Town of Elletsville. We're supplying the office for them to be in. And Darla has worked on the MOU. So Darla, I'll let you continue on the MOU then.
As Jimmy said, this is a continuation of, for lack of a better word, from the previous MOU that was entered into by the Town and the Monroe County Prosecutor's Office. This is for interns for the High Tech Crime Lab. And so the proposal is that this, there will be student interns, three of them, to be paid at the rate of $10 an hour for no more than 25 hours a week, backdated or made retroactive to July 1st. And the plan is to keep that amount and that number of students in place for two years, which is the term of the original contract.
Questions from council? Actions from council?
I'll make a motion to approve the MOU addendum between Town of Elletsville and Monroe County Prosecutor's Office for the HDCU interns.
Second.
Motion, a second.
Dan Swaffer?
Yes.
Trevor Sager?
Yes.
William Ellis?
Yes.
Scott Oldham?
Yes.
Pamela Samples?
Yes.
Next, there's Baker Tilly proposed engagement scope agreement for economic projects.
Oh, yeah, I'll take this. It's, it's a proposal from Baker Tilly. It should be at the back of your packet. It has an amount for creating a TIF allocation area and going through the proper steps to put it together. I think Darla's already looked at the proposals. And this would help us put together the information we need to move forward with the TIF if we decide to. And I think it'd be helpful before we have our meeting on the 20th.
Okay, and I'll remind everyone, including the council, that this agreement is only to give us the financial perspective of what it could cost, what it could render. This is not a vote on the actual TIF itself. This is an investigatory document to more inform us on what we may be doing in the long run.
Thank you.
Questions from council? Actions from council?
I guess I'll make a motion to approve the Baker Tilly proposed engagement scope agreement for economic projects. proposed engagement scope agreement for economic projects.
Second.
Motion second. Noel, please.
Dan Swaffer?
Yes.
Trevor Sager?
Yes.
William Ellis?
Yes.
Scott Oldham?
Yes.
Pamela Samples?
Yes.
Okay. Future digital sign at the fire department. Do we want to discuss this?
That would be me. Yes. One of the things, and we've heard quite a bit even on Zoom today, and people say they're not informed of hot button items. And we do our due diligence. We advertise. We do all the legal checkmarks, even go on Facebook and social media and tell people. But one suggestion that a lot of people seem to say this would be a good idea. We put these public notice signs up all over. They're small. I can't even read them. I mean, they're, to me, we put those up more to check a box than actually inform the public. And I think if we had a digital sign at the fire department, but everybody knows where that is, as long as it doesn't block the ingress or egress of fire trucks and let people know about these public notices, public hearings, things that can affect their taxes, I don't see a downside. Yes, there would be a cost to the town, but I'm willing to look into signs or work with Chris or Kevin to do that. I just, I'd like a council discussion on that and just what's thoughts on that?
I believe in its present form. It violates the new UDO, does it not?
Would it, Denise?
Yeah, she'll have to go to the PTA.
Yeah. I would hate to think.
Just saying.
I would hate to think Ellisville's taken a step backwards when it comes to digital signs, but that's not a hill I'm going to die on for the UDO because.
It is regulated with how fast a speed you can go.
Right. But they can still have a digital sign, correct? I mean, really, there's no data, the digital signs, there's anything wrong with them above. I mean, otherwise, you're going to have to pay someone every time something happens to put a new sign up.
Yeah, I get it. No, digital signs are permitted. You just have to watch your speed, so.
And we do have to watch our speed on 45, too, but I don't think anybody does.
How many more works will that sign call?
People's going down to try to watch and read.
Yeah. Bad drivers are bad drivers. We don't want to legislate for the dumb.
Well, they say for digital signage, if it's going too fast, it causes more accidents because people are so absorbed in trying to read it.
Oh, I would like to see the data.
Yeah, that's very anecdotal. I've looked into that. And there's no data on brightness or anything that actually interferes, with the exception, if you have two or three big digital billboards at an intersection, that can cause at night some issues. But it's only like a 3% to 4% increase in crashes, which falls between the margin of error.
Well, you might think it's a great idea, but instead of a digital moving billboard, I would rather see like the billboard there on Rogers there that always has the IU football stuff. It looks like a regular billboard, but it's actually a screen. So like they could put a notice up there and it looks like a regular billboard, but then it could change.
I know. That's not even in the Town of Ellisville, though.
No, no. I'm saying something like that instead of.
During the UDO conversation, that is a digital billboard. That is the future of billboards.
Right.
And we ban those in our UDO. And I fought against that and lost that.
I thought it was, and I missed that one, obviously, but I thought that was just the scrolling signs.
No. Am I right, Denise?
I really have to go back and look at that now. We've talked about signs.
I remember that conversation because we were saying we don't like billboards, but likes and dislikes should not be.
Sure.
We shouldn't legislate for our likes and dislikes.
Well, I just mentioned, or heard you guys mentioned the speed of them and all that. Well, that's when I envisioned, okay, well, you've got a scrolling.
I would rather that. But one would be more expensive because we would have to lease it from someone else.
Sure.
And we currently don't have any digital billboards like that. But they're probably the most cost-effective way of advertising because you can get 10 to 15 people on one.
Yeah.
And the AV on that little section, it could pay for probably every billboard we have in, because that's a pretty good income producing.
Yep. So we can sell advertising spots on it there.
But I'm saying, maybe something we want to reintroduce to the signs.
Anything further with this?
So I mean, what's the council's pleasure? Should we pursue this?
I think we need to figure this.
I think it's a good idea.
UDO out first before we think about this.
I'm fine with the sign. I think it's a good idea. I don't have an issue with billboards that some other folks seem to have.
I don't either.
I do like the one, as Dan spoke of, there at Kinsher in the bypass.
I love the ones in Martinsville. It shows we're modern and we're actually in the 21st century.
It doesn't tend to get run down.
Nope.
Because you don't start to see stuff.
Not like billboard by the fire station. It's all faded. It looks like it's been there for 10 years.
And I mean, it actually looks like a regular billboard until you see it switch screens.
You're exactly right.
So yeah, I would love something like that, so.
So you're going to do the background research on this?
I can, yes. And I can bring some costs to.
Can we put positive remarks to the police officers on that sign?
To the police officer?
So it won't say.
It's another tool in our joke.
Do you want to have a speed detector on it, too?
Sure.
Hey, there we go. The first sign it will say is quiet, fireman sleeping. The same. We're going to move on. Public hearing for the Office of Community Development Block Grant Program.
Okay. The Town of Ellisville intends to apply for an Office of Community and Rural Affairs Owner Occupied Rehabilitation Grant. The goal of the grant is for communities to create a program for low to moderate income residents to repair their primary residences. To be considered, projects must meet the benefit to low and moderate income as it pertains to housing. National Directive of the Housing and Community Development Act of 1974 has amended. Grant funds will be used to assist current homeowners with the repair or rehabilitation of owner occupied units. Projects need to be ready to proceed upon grant award and will be completed within 18 months. Eligible activities are roof repair or replacement, ADA accessibility modifications up to the threshold of the home, heating and cooling replacement, select lighting features and electrical upgrades and water heater replacement. And I just want to add, just because I'm applying doesn't mean it will get granted, but we're required to do a public hearing. So I just need to request any comment or if anybody has any question.
Who approves that? Would you, like if somebody applied for, who approves it?
Yeah, the OCRA has an application and then they tell us what we're required to obtain from the applicant.
Questions, comments from council? Questions or comment from the public or anyone online? Seeing none, back to the council for action.
Mike, sorry, Scott, I don't need action. I just needed to state that.
So you don't need approval? You don't need board approval?
No, you approved it at your last meeting.
Okay, fair enough. Then we'll move on. Privilege of the floor. Anyone having business for the council not part of our normal agenda? Seeing none in. This is not part of the normal agenda, so we're not going to go back and repeat the UDO.
Okay. Josh, and I hear what you just said. But like that document is a living document? Why can't this be a living conversation? Why can't we revisit?
Because we're done and we're past that. If you have comments for council, you're free to talk to us afterwards, but this part of the meeting is for other business, not that. Is there anyone else having business for the council not part of the normal agenda?
That's a prime example of shoving that out of, like I mentioned earlier.
Seeing no one, now we're going to move supervisor comments. Counsel comments.
Denise, do I need to email you the house for the fence?
Yeah, because it's the first time I've ever had it. I'll email you the person's name and house. I'll say it publicly. Thank you.
Other council comments?
I would just like to revert what Mike said earlier. I appreciate everyone coming out, getting involved in everything and would love to see this at every meeting.
Anyone else? Mike, do you have anything? No further business for the council. Meeting sets adjourned.